One of the auditoriums actually wants to be a gentleman. I'm like, kid, you've gotta, you've gotta have higher aspirations.
Today is June 10th, 2024. It's 5:33 PM. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, you need to fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the citizens addressing the council item on the agenda. Please state your name, and if you are a Morehead resident, if you choose to make a comment. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at moreheadmn.gov. We, the Morehead City Council collectively with gratitude, acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, A'Jibwe, Metis, and all Indigenous communities permeate this land. And with that, could I get a roll call, please? Ryan Nelson. Matthew Gilberton.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Laura Karoon.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Larry Selgevold.
Here.
Sebastian McDougall.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson. Here. And for those who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and City Manager Molly, are there any agenda amendments?
No amendments to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and we do have a council member who is attending remotely, which means we have to do a roll call vote for every meeting, or every, every time we make a vote. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Proof. Second, Niesemeyer.
A motion by Councilmember Hendrickson, and a second by Councilmember Niesemeyer. Any discussion? See none, roll call vote, please.
Gilberton.
Aye.
Niesemeyer.
Yes.
Karoon.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Selgevold.
Aye.
McDougall.
Aye.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Right, the consent agenda carries. We have a number of recognitions and presentations tonight, and the first is our June Morehead Recognition Award, and so I am going to turn this over to Holly Hycamp.
Well, thank you, Mayor and members. Today, we are so excited for this project, but Heather Rank, all five Rotary Clubs, and the Fargo-Morehead Rotary Foundation have been the champions of the Rotary Natural Play Hill and Bike Park at Riverfront Park, which is set to open on June 20th. The project has been in planning since 2018, will soon provide the community an inspiring hilltop play area overlooking the Red River with opportunities for unstructured play, interactive learning, and year-round outdoor physical activity. The Rotary raised 1.15 million with generous support of over 300 total donors. This includes major donations from the Fargo-Morehead Convention and Visitors Bureau, Shields Foundation, Sanford Health Foundation. Over 100 Rotary members contributed personally to this project. The City of Morehead contributed $60,000 for some site preparation for this wonderful, unique amenity in our community. The size, scope, and especially the leadership by Heather Rank and the Rotary makes this an opportune time to recognize this amazing gift to the community of Morehead. The Play Hill and Bike Park will be donated to the city, who will then be responsible for the regular maintenance and upkeep. The park will be free and open to the public year-round as a unique destination for kids throughout the entire region. This is the second major project for Morehead Parks spearheaded by the Rotary, with the first being the Miracle Field in Southside Regional Park. Thank you, Heather, and the FM Rotary Club, and the Foundation for your continued support for impactful projects in our community. We appreciate your work. The Morehead Award given tonight will commemorate with a piece of art commissioned from local artist Dennis Kroll, especially for this purpose. So if you could join us, thank you so much to the group. If one of you wants to say a few words, and then we'll line up for a picture.
Thank you. All right, I'm Heather Rank, I'm the Project Chair for the Rotary Natural Play Hill and a member of Fargo Rotary Club. We have a close collaboration of the five local Rotary Clubs here because we saw that if you work together, you can do bigger, more impactful projects, and we just like teamwork around here. So why did we want to build this project in particular, a natural playground or play hill? We saw that kids were struggling with kind of being too tied to their devices and not getting enough vitamin N for nature. Both kids and adults need that, and it's a real physical and mental health benefit. So Natural Play Hill should lure kids outside to do the fun things that we enjoyed growing up. So the five clubs collaborated on this large fundraising effort, a lot bigger than what we've done before, and with that many donors, really tremendous effort. And I really want to speak to the partnership with the City of Morehead and Holly and Morehead Parks. It truly was a partnership. Any issue that came up, we worked through it in a team effort, and it was truly a very wonderful experience. And now we have a great playground to show for it, that'll be here for many years. And just one final plug for service clubs. If I was just a random mom who wanted to build a playground, it would be hard to do that on my own, or just with a few friends. But with the service club, you can do bigger, better things, you can collaborate, you can draw in connections, and Rotary spearheaded this, but we had a lot of support from the Optimists Club, Sertoma, Lions. So joining a service club is a great way to expand your impact and make a bigger dent in your community, so it's a quick plug for that as well. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. We will have a grand opening and ribbon cutting, and that's when we're going to actually open the gate and let the kids in, on Thursday, June 20th, at 10:00 AM. So invite your friends and family. We'll have parking at Riverfront Park and the east section of the Morehead Center Mall. We'll have a shuttle available. Love to have lots of people there, so thank you, and come to the grand opening.
You gotta be, you gotta be up a little bit.
Thank you so much to the Rotary. I'm, I'm a little curious on, on if it's going to be a traveling trophy with the five Rotaries, if it will go between them all. If I have any vote, I would like to vote that Morehead gets it first. The next is a presentation of the Transit Reorganization Study, and I will turn, I have Wade Klein on here, so I don't know if I turn it over to you, Wade, or if I turn it over, okay. Okay.
Thank you. Is this on? Hear me okay? Good. Thank you, Mayor Carlson, members of the council, for an opportunity to provide an update this evening on the Transit Reorganization Study that we've been working on cooperatively with the City of Fargo and the City of Moorhead. Just a few points we want to kind of step through here this evening, and then certainly answer any questions the council or mayor may have. Number of things that we're looking at here in terms of governance, recommendations, organizational structure, staffing plan, looking at some changes now that the Fargo Moorhead Metropolitan Area has gone up and over 200,000 in population. Of course, you now become a transportation management area, changes some of the federal funding that the cities will now have to manage, that changes some of the FTA reporting, some of the FTA funding. We've looked at some cost-sharing concepts, and then as we move deeper into the summer, we'll need to start looking at a joint powers agreement or an updated joint powers agreement between the cities and some additional inter-local governmental agreements. Of course, the whole reason we're going through this process largely is because it's a number of things have happened before this, but of course, with Lori retiring, there's some things we need to kind of iron out and codify between the two cities just to make sure that everything is gonna, gonna work. You know, I think folks were kind of nodding as I was talking about this, but certainly now as you go up and over 200,000 as a metropolitan area, all sources of federal funding, for the most part, now flow directly to the cities and/or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, so this now has an impact on the FTA funding. Early in the process, we did make a cooperative decision between the two cities that the City of Fargo would become what the federal government would call, call the designated recipient for the Federal Transit Administration or FTA funds that support metro area transit. So that helps sort of streamline the process of, of sort of delivering public transit funding. Now, Moorhead will continue to directly manage all of its pre-Federal Fiscal Year '24 funding. Going forward, Fargo would become the designated recipient, starting in the current federal fiscal year, which of course started October 1. Now, Moorhead and Fargo do have the flexibility to treat Moorhead as a sub-recipient or a direct recipient, but Fargo would maintain its, its role as a designated recipient. So some of its administrivia, some of it's not. You know, the two systems have worked so cooperatively together over the past four decades that some of these more administrative changes really don't really, don't really change a tremendous amount of how the day-to-day operations of map bus really works. Some of the things that we are tracking now, as you become a transportation management area, you go up and over that 200,000 mark, something that we knew was coming many, many years ago, as we approached becoming a TMA, is the fact that some of the direct operating assistance from FTA actually goes down. You'll see on the slide here, the City of Fargo losing about 20%, Moorhead losing a little over 24% in some of that direct operational federal funding. So it's not an insignificant amount. You know, fortunately for the City of Moorhead, you have a fantastic partnership with the state of Minnesota and MINDOT. You know, a few things will change regarding some of the statewide transit funding that MINDOT used to pass through to the City of Moorhead, but that, that core transit operating agreement with MINDOT does not change. And then there are some new federal funds that Moorhead will benefit from that come direct to the Metropolitan Planning Area to support elderly and disabled transportation, as well as some bus and bus facilities, or what you might call capital expenses. Now, more than ever, of course, it becomes very important for map bus, or the City of Fargo and the City of Moorhead, to work through the Metropolitan Planning Organization or MetroCog, to take advantage of some of that additional capital flexibility that MetroCog now has authority over as a, as a transportation management area. So these will be things that, that will kind of get worked out as the cities develop that longer-term funding strategy. The City of Moorhead, really, it's all about preserving that integrity of the MINDOT contract, which we have all reason to believe, you know, will be there into the future. You know, but MINDOT, of course, is a performance-based operation, so, you know, continuing to make sure that, you know, you're meeting those benchmarks that MINDOT needs you to meet. City of Fargo has some additional challenges in front of it, just in terms of trying to move out of that COVID-era funding that they were, you know, Moorhead got the same funding, but, you know, Fargo really needs to start to work with trying to potentially get more state aid, trying to flex the federal funds that they do have. North Dakota DOT has said that they will provide some flexibility as far as other statewide capital funds that don't get spent across the state of North Dakota to help try to level that playing field. But again, I think where the federal funds are concerned, it's, it's working with the MPO, it's considering other discretionary grants through the Infrastructure and Investments and Jobs Act, just to meet some of those larger-term capital needs. A big piece of the, the reorganization study that, that we looked at was trying to come up with a new, a new map board. There has been a map board in place since about 2004, so the reorganizational study does talk about creating a new board. That membership is, is shown here. It's, it's more of a, sort of a hybrid, sort of political, technical board, just because we're going to need this board to get a lot further into the weeds than the current map board does. So we really look at this as, as both a balance of the Moorhead City Council, the Fargo City Commission, and then some of the, the key technical leadership that make the wheels go round and round, I didn't mean to say that, on the bus. But in any event, you know, some administrative and technical leadership from both communities, particularly the finance departments, just to make sure that we're able to, to stand behind some of the financial information that, that is going into supporting the overall system. So this will be something the council will need to take action on at a future date, putting this new, this new board into action. So the staffing framework is, is a big part of this, and I know some of this has been shared with council, so I'm trying to move kind of expeditiously through this. The City of Fargo has committed to adding a senior accounting position, so we'll talk a little bit about how do we make sure that the City of Moorhead and MINDOT's interests get, continue to be met once Lori Van Beek retires. Fargo has agreed to add that senior accountant position in the third quarter of 2024. The existing two additional Moorhead staff would be retained. Some decisions need to be made over the next couple of months, as far as will they transition to be City of Fargo employees, or will they be contracted from the City of Moorhead to the City of Fargo? Both of those options do exist. Additionally, and we'll talk a little bit here about the, the two org charts we've looked at, the City of Fargo has expressed an interest in looking at taking all of its contracted drivers and, and operations staff. You know, currently, all the, the bus drivers and their management team are a third-party contractor, so the City of Fargo is interested in bringing those employees into the City of Fargo over the next two years. So that, you'll see that reflected here a little bit in, in some of the proposed staffing charts that I'll kind of quickly go through. So with the Moorhead Transit Manager, with Lori retiring, you know, we have taken, and this is impossible to see on the screen, but you should be able to see it in front of you, you know, we have looked at, and Lori did a lot of the legwork on this, really looking at the day-to-day stuff that Lori Van Beek and her team provide to support the overall system. You know, those duties and responsibilities have been basically spread across the existing Fargo org chart, whether it's the Director, the two Assistant Directors, the Mobility Manager that the cities cooperatively hire, the Senior Accountant will be an important part of it, and then in 2026, the City of Fargo will also add an Office Manager position, presumably from its third-party contractor, that would then also pick up that load. So this was a big part. A lot of the questions from MINDOT were, you know, how are you going to continue to maintain those relate, those commitments back to, you know, the Moorhead interests, the Dilworth interests, the MINDOT interests? So this framework kind of assures everybody that, you know, those responsibilities won't be abdicated. Essentially, they're being distributed across the org chart. And this kind of shows the proposed 2025 org chart. So this is, you can see what I would point out would be the three yellow boxes on this org chart would really account for the Moorhead position. So Moorhead essentially has those three positions currently, so you can see the Senior Accountant would, would generally account for some of Lori's responsibilities. The Office Associate, three, you know, that's the Jackie Engel position. You know, that would kind of fit into the Fargo org chart, and then you see the, the current Marketing Manager, her name escapes me, Taran Terra, would, would fit into the org chart as well, and then the rest of the responsibilities would, would kind of get distributed. So the interesting thing on this org chart, you'll see on the left-hand side, the TransDev Contract, so the General Manager, the Operations Manager Safety, and then all the people who drive the buses, you know, currently third-party operators. So the desire from the City of Fargo, as we jump to the 2026 org chart, and I'll just kind of toggle back and forth, you see the operator on the outside as a contractor, then as we move to 2026, particularly on the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see a lot of that, those contracted employees now get fit into the overall operations structure for the City of Fargo. So these become City of Fargo FTEs, and then they add those blue positions that you'll see there now. So those would be new positions that were previously contracted between the two cities, now being integrated into the City of Fargo, the overall City of Fargo struct, transit structure. And to account for this, the City of Fargo will be adding some human resources capacity. I mean, obviously, if you're bringing in, you know, 80-plus FTEs, that's going to be some additional work for the Human Resources Department, and so they've, are accounting for that. A lot of decisions still need to be made about this potential to bring in the third-party contractor. I mean, this is not a done deal. You know, we're trying to get to the 2025. That is a done deal. The decisions on whether the cities, or the City of Fargo, goes to this internalizing of the third-party operator, still a lot of budget work to do, still a lot of negotiation on that, but that is the desire, we believe, from the City of Fargo to implement that change with the 2026 budget year. A number of agreements, you know, the big one, the joint powers agreement between the two cities needs to be updated. Ideally, that would happen before the end of the calendar year. Integrated into that would be a purchase-of-service agreement, which would kind of wrap itself around a cost allocation plan. That's the big thing that, that Lori and her team have been working on with the City of Fargo, is develop that cost allocation plan as we start to merge these budgets. MINDOT really wants to make sure that, you know, state and federal resources that are allocated to the Minnesota share of the metropolitan area, you know, are being accounted for. Everybody's getting credit for that, and nobody's paying for something that they shouldn't be. So that'll really formalize, you know, a lot of the relationships. So you'll see Fargo will still contract with North Dakota DOT, West Fargo, NDSU. Moorhead would still contract with the state of Minnesota, the Moorhead Colleges and Dilworth. So some pieces of what exists today would still be there. Other things will get folded into new agreements. Won't get into the weeds here, but, you know, Lori and the map bus team have been working closely with the City of Fargo on a cost-sharing methodology, where they're basically taking two municipal departments and really putting a single budget together. So they have developed a very detailed, you know, nine or 10-point cost-sharing plan. Same thing for revenues. The entire system is really being, you know, disaggregated and put back together, and it does provide an extremely transparent process to make sure that, you know, dollar-in, dollar-out kind of a thing, so that everybody is getting credit for, you know, the, the revenues that they should be getting credit for and paying for the costs that they should be paying for. And it all really comes down to a number of sort of calculations based on the operations of the system, whether it's revenue miles, ridership, and those kinds of things. So a lot there, and, and, you know, our contract didn't have us get into the weeds on that, but, you know, the map bus team, both finance departments, I should remind the City Council and the mayor that, that both Fargo/Moorhead Finance have kind of been with us the whole step of the way, so that's been very helpful to make sure that we don't get to the end of this and then say, well, have you talked to finance? So, I mean, we feel like we've got a pretty solid financial team that's been working with us on this as we've gone forward. So some next steps is, you know, this will come back to council, I believe, in July. As part of that, the cities do need to stand up some kind of interim board or interim technical committee that's going to kind of work to get us through to the end of the year, you know, get a new joint powers agreement in place, make sure that we get that 2025 budget, and make sure that we have a, a multi-jurisdictional group of some form that's, that's making sure how we transition from '25 to '26. So I've probably taken more time than you wanted, I apologize, so I'll stop right there.
No, thank you. I know that this is something that you've been working on for a really, really long time, and I know it's gonna, it's always a process. Kind of getting a little bit insight into how the sausage is being made, but this is, we typically do, I typically don't allow any back and forth during recognitions and presentations, but because this is such a complicated process, and Chris Reddy, if you, I know you can hear me, so can we switch back to Deb, please, so that we're able to see her? But are there any council members who have any questions or comments of either Wade or Ms. Van Beek? Right, see none, thank you, and I know that we will likely hear more from our city manager and learn more as it comes again before council. Ms. Van Beek, did you have any other comments you wanted to provide to the council?
I was just going to say that this presentation will be made to the City of Fargo Commissioners on June 24th, and we expect to come back here on, in July to give you their comments, and, and then hopefully by then have a joint powers agreement amendment, so that we can accept the study and set out the next steps to, to get this implemented.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Wade, for coming and, and providing us with that information. All right, moving on to the next presentation, this will be turned over to our Public Works Director, Paul Fickner, and this is a Cleanup Week's update that was requested by Councilmember Hendrickson.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to give a quick update to Cleanup Week here for, or Cleanup Days, I should say, for 2024, and let you know how it went. As you know, Cleanup Days is a two-week event, plus we have a, on the third day, we have an additional Cleanup Day for the Oakport neighborhood, so it's 11 days total. During those 11 days, residents can leave waste or bulk items on their boulevard, and city employees will come pick it up and haul it for proper, proper disposal. Excuse me. This year, during those 11 days, we collected an additional 696 tons of waste, and we also collected 35 tons of metal, which was taken for recycling, and 585 Freon appliances, which will be disposed of properly. So quite a bit of material to be picked up this year. What we do to accomplish that is we have 38 employees that work together, that's comprised of the sanitation department, the street department, and contracted laborers. We also had 18 pieces of equipment on the streets to help with that. Overall, during the two weeks, we had good weather. One of the things we always want to look out for is rain, which we typically see in May. Not only working in the rain makes it more difficult, but also handling materials that are wet or soaked from the water. We did have one sizable rain event on the second week, but the employees were dedicated, and they pushed through and, and made it happen, so I definitely want to say thank you to everyone for that. On the second week, we did break for a lunch. We had a pizza lunch to show our appreciation and kind of celebrate as we're nearing the end of the Cleanup Days, as it can be trying, you know, doing it over and over for the employees. Another item I want to point out is the Resource Recovery Center, which is operated by Clay County. During Cleanup Days, we open up the doors free to residents to bring in their items to dispose of. We had 385 loads of, from residents, where they loaded up their own materials and brought them in for disposal. So quite a bit of workload on the Resource Recovery side, Recovery Center side there too. So the biggest thing to highlight is just the teamwork involved to accomplish all of this. Not only city employees with the sanitation and street department, the communications department, sharing what's going on with the community and making sure people are aware of Cleanup Days, and Clay County, just with the added workload and amount of material that they process through their facility there too. Overall, it was a successful year, and we're planning for 2025.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Councilmember Hendrickson for bringing back this Cleanup Week update. I think it is helpful for us to know how much work it takes to just collect all the garbage we throw out, so. And I do know that, I spoke with some of the Public Works folks on my street when they were coming the day after the rain, so that must be when my day is, or whatever. I felt really bad for them because some of it was really, really heavy after we had that rain, and so kudos to all of them who still stuck it out and, and did a great job. So thank you, Paul, to you and your crew, and I'm glad that you gave them that pizza day to celebrate what a great job that they did.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, we have two proclamations to read that came through the Human Rights Committee, and one is Juneteenth, and one is World Refugee Day. So I will be reading the Juneteenth one, and Councilmember McDougall, who is a member of the Human Rights Committee, will be reading the World Refugee Day proclamation. With the first one, this is an official proclamation of the City of Moorhead, State of Minnesota, whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation ending slavery in the United States on January 1st, 1863, and whereas news of the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach the frontier area And whereas news of the emancipation proclamation did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, including Texas and other southwestern states, until June 19, 1865, when Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and shared the news that the Civil War had ended and enslaved people were free. And whereas African-Americans who had been slaves celebrated June 19, 1865, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And whereas African-Americans have continued the tradition of observing Juneteenth Independence Day for more than 150 years. Whereas Juneteenth Independence Day began as a holiday in the state of Texas, and it's now celebrated in 46 states and the District of Columbia as a day of observance, recognizing the emancipation of all slaves in the United States. Whereas Juneteenth Independence Day celebrations are held to honor African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures. Now therefore, I, Shelley Carlson, Mayor of the City of Morehead, do hereby proclaim June 19 as Juneteenth Independence Day. So we will be having events in the city of Morehead in collaboration with some of our local nonprofit organizations and different entities. I don't recall the dates off the top of my head, but I'm hoping Councilmember McDougall, who is, has discussed those at the Human Rights Commission, will be able to provide us with some more information. I'll turn it over to Councilmember McDougall.
Juneteenth will be next Monday here at the Yum-Kum Center. Official proclamation, City of Morehead, World Refugee Day, 2024. Whereas World Refugee, World Refugee Day is an annual commemoration adopted by the United Nations in 2000 to honor and raise awareness of refugees. And whereas more than 79 million displaced people have been forced from their homes worldwide, more than any other time in recorded history, including over 26 million refugees. And whereas refugees are people who have fled their country because they have a well-founded fear of persecution because of their race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or memberships in a particular social group. And whereas resettlement provides a safe haven when refugees cannot return home and cannot rebuild their lives in their country they fled due to lack of access to safety, shelter, healthcare, education, or protection. Whereas the city of Morehead is home to a diverse population of refugees and immigrants and adding the economic strength and cultural richness of our community. Now therefore, Shelley Carlson, Mayor of the City of Morehead, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 20 as World Refugee, World Refugee Day in Morehead.
Thank you. And I just pulled up the information from Fred's Dissonance, who is, did a fantastic job last year also doing Juneteenth Independence Day celebrations. And in Morehead, it is going to be celebrated on Monday from 4:00 to 8:30 here at the Yum-Kum Center. Friday, or Saturday on June 15, it's going to be in Fargo. So there's a couple of different dates and times. I think if you just Google "Morehead, Juneteenth Independence Day," Fred'sDissonance.com brings up all of the information and information about what's going to be done and where it's being held. They're also doing celebrations in Jamestown and Bismarck and other areas. So thank you to Fred and his group for doing that and doing such a great job. The other thing that I just wanted to mention, if we could just also maybe have a moment of silence to also for the slain Minneapolis Police Officer Jamal Mitchell, whose funeral is going to be held tomorrow in Maple Grove, just to recognize that, because I know that that has been on the minds of our law enforcement officers here in the city of Morehead as well. Thank you, everyone. And our thoughts and prayers go out to that officer's friends and family. Moving on to the May 28, 2024 meeting minutes approval. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved, McDougall?
Have a motion by McDougall, a second by Selgevold. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Selgevold?
Aye.
McDougall?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, and moving on to the agenda items, citizens addressing the council. We do have an individual who wishes to address the council, Mr. Aaron Burrows. If you would like to come to the podium, sir, once you get to the podium, I'll explain how this all works. So we have this not very high-tech instrument here. So green is, you can continue talking. You have three minutes to provide the information to the council. When it's read, that means that your time is up. We need you to state your full name, and then also whether or not you are a resident of the city of Morehead. And also during this time, this is an opportunity for individuals to come and provide information and speak to the council. But we don't engage in back-and-forth conversations because it's us to take the information in. If there is something that you state that I maybe know that that question could be answered immediately by either our city manager, assistant city manager, maybe our city attorney, or somebody else that, we already have somebody here that can answer the questions, then they'll speak with you out in the lobby area. So with that, please, please go ahead.
What is, is it your mic that's green and red?
The light will turn on when you start speaking.
Okay. I just didn't know which light. I didn't.
Yeah.
So it's the mic?
Very fancy.
Okay.
It's, they're just colors. Like, like, it's lit up. It'll be lit up. That's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay, because your mic was red. So I, I got different colors on this side. That's why I was asking for clarification.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening, Mayor and council persons. My name is Aaron Lee Burrows. I am from the great state of Texas, Houston to be exact, about 43 miles away from Galveston. So it's a little fitting that I would be here on this, this day where the mayor makes a proclamation. I was on my way over here and just pondering what I was going to say. As my Uber driver was taking me, I asked him where he was from, and he said Nigeria. And he's been over in America for about 20 years. But he talked about his country and why he would never go back. And he has children over there, and he's hoping by God's grace that they can bring him over. As a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ, and also I'm a Road Runners Club of America certified coach, I befriended Mark and Mark Newsom, the late race director. In 2019, I was going to come up here and do the Fargo Marathon as part of my quest to run 50 marathons in 50 states in 50 weeks, five years after I was shot in a workplace shooting several times and survived. I was literally running for my mental health and my well-being. As I was speaking to the gentleman, he talked about the right, the rights of, that America's, that America has, has been skewed, from his perspective, and that people think they have the right to do whatever they want to do. And I made a statement that we don't have the right to do whatever we want to do. We have the responsibility with our freedom of our right to do what we ought to do. And that's why I'm here to speak to y'all today. I experienced something that is counterintuitive, counterproductive, and goes against all that you talked about with the Juneteenth. And we know that America has a lot of healing to do still. And that's what I'm here to challenge you to do. From my perspective, as an African-American who has seen injustice from the time I was in elementary school until the time I was up here for the Fargo Marathon, I don't want to be angry. I don't want to be bitter. I don't want to be resentful. It takes too much energy for all of that. But at the same time, I do want to have a voice, and I do want to ask for your help. I was at the Bison Plain Lodge where, once upon entering the establishment, I was greeted with a friendly greet until the lady looked at me. Once she looked at me, pretty much like I'm looking at y'all, I didn't see anybody that was like me in the lodge, customers, employees, or anything. But she instantly became very hostile towards me. It became very evident, very quickly, that there was an issue, not only with the color of my skin, but the fact that I introduced myself as a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ, which I often do, if you ask anybody, in the running community, my family, friends, anywhere I go, because that's who I am, that's what I do. And I'm also a certified run coach, and I introduce myself like that as well. But not to be given the opportunity to speak or to have a commerce transaction because of the color of my skin, because I'm a minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ is just not right. I asked her for a supervisor. She then said it was privately owned, and that she had been there for a long time, and that she could call the owner. I asked her to call the owner so I could talk to the owner. When she picked up the phone and called the police, and I know none of y'all are African-American men, but I will state an honest truth that it may be hard for you to hear. Anytime a white person in a situation want to exercise their privilege to call the police on a black man, automatically, my life is in danger. Because I understand that nobody's going to believe me. And even though the Holy Spirit of God, before I walked in there, told me to cut my camera on, and I cut it on, and even though I have video showing what she did, the police that responded didn't want to hear it. Nobody wanted to hear it. I'm asking this city council to hear it, and I'm asking for help. I'm asking for help, not only for me, but for you, for my children, my grandchildren, your children, your grandchildren, to help bring healing about in America. Because it's at these crucial moments that you and I have a right and a responsibility to do what we ought to do, not what we can do. Thank you for your time, Mayor and council people.
Thank you. And I know that you had contacted all of us and provided some of this background information. And the information that you shared would be something that would need to be dealt with in civil, in civil court between you and the hotel. But it's, I appreciate you making us aware of the situation. And I don't know, City Attorney Shockley, I don't know if you can provide any more insight, other than that it really becomes this civil issue between Mr. Burrows and the hotel. There's, there's not much that the city can do to intervene in that.
That, you know, having limited facts to the situation right now, generally, that would be correct, Mayor, that there would be potentially a civil claim regarding, there's different requirements regarding service that any type of establishment is required to provide to anyone of the public that is asking for, you know, basic services should be able to, should be entitled to that service. Though knowing the specifics, at this time, that's about the best I can provide for guidance, is that there are potential civil claims out there. If there is a issue about the city, you know, we can certainly take a look at that. But I don't have enough information right now to provide anything beyond that.
Thank you. Did you have an additional statement, Mr. Burrows?
Yeah. As far as the civil's concerned with the, with the, with the hotel, I do understand that. My issue is more so with the city council and the police and how they responded to me. And although I had evidence that what she was saying, she was lying about at the time, no one took any time to listen to it, to investigate it, before I was basically bum-rushed, dragged out. I suffer from PTSD, a severe case of PTSD, which was triggered. I haven't been sleeping in regular places since then. I had to seek medical treatment at a hospital here for medicine at that time. So that's, that's more so there. I do understand that there's issues when it comes to the business end of that. But what I'm more concerned about with the city council and yourself, Mayor, is that the police were weaponized against me as a black man because of my color, skin, and my religion. And the police, not one officer, took time to look at the video that I had been recording. And not only that, but they also violated my First and Fourth Amendment rights, especially when the one officer took my camera from me, my phone out of my hand, and cut my camera off. That goes against what the Supreme Court has ruled. I have a right to record, and they can't do that. So that's where you come in. This council comes in and addressing the actions of the officers, because they have to, like, one officer said that responded, the respondent officer told me, when the one officer took my camera and cut it off, I told him I was afraid of my life. I was afraid of my dying at that point in time. And he looked at me like, you're afraid of your life? Like, really? And it's insensitive.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna cut you off, Mr. Burrows, just because to, we don't typically do this. And, and I know that you and I have communicated via email. And I would really strongly encourage you to connect with our chief of police, who I do know did reveal all of that. But if you have continued concerns, I would encourage you to make, make an appointment to sit down and have the chief police go through those videos. And one of our sergeants is in the back, and he can certainly help facilitate getting that meeting taken care of for you as well. And they can provide you with information on what the protocols and policies are in regards to when a local establishment calls for law enforcement and asks somebody to be removed from their facility. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying that, you know, there's policy procedures our law enforcement officers have to follow. If you have concerns about them, the person to connect with would be our chief of police. And then if there are still issues, then he'll, he'll connect with our city manager, and then up to myself and the council members.
And I understand about the procedures and policies.
Yep.
But the Constitution of the United States is not a procedure or policy. It's something that they're sworn to uphold.
I understand that, but we're not going to be able to, to. Yep.
With the city.
That, yep, but we're not gonna be able to get this resolved in a city council meeting. So it really needs to be more of a meeting between yourself and our chief of police. So thank you, sir, for coming tonight. We, it is after 5:45, so we can have a public hearing. The next is a public hearing related to proposals that the city adopt the redevelopment plan for the Morehead Prairie Parkway Redevelopment Project area. And with this, I will be turning this over to City Manager Molly. But first, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Niesemeyer. Second, Karun?
Have a motion by Niesemeyer, a second by Karun. Any discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Selgevold?
McDougall?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. The hearing is now open to the public, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So we have a development in the Prairie Parkway addition that was planned to be shared tonight. The developer reached out and is requesting additional time to further define the scope of the project, and is requesting that the hearing be continued or postponed to a meeting a little later this summer.
All right. Any members of the audience have any statements that they would like to make in regards to... have any statements that they would like to make in regards to this agenda item? It's be the opportunity for the public to speak on this proposal. Seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So move.
So motion by Selgevold, a second by McDougal, any further discussion to adjourn the meeting? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Gilbertson?
Niesemeyer?
Yes.
Karun?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Selgevold?
Aye.
McDougal?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. The public hearing on this item is adjourned. We do not have a resolution related to this item, but we will hear more about it at a future date. With that, we now go down to mayor and council reports. Are there any council members who have any reports on boards or commissions? Council member Gilbertson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, it's not the Board of Commission, but I just wanted to let everyone here know that next Tuesday, June 18th, at 1:30, downtown Cariback is doing their groundbreaking ceremony on the corner of Sixth Street and Center Avenue, and we will head to swingbarrel afterwards. All are welcome.
All right, thank you, Council member Gilbertson. Any other council members? Council member Selgevold.
For three, we're going to have a, you know, number White and myself, and we had Riverfront Point, the Dog Park.
All right, thank you, Council member Selgevold. Any other council members? Seeing none, I think probably the biggest ones that I would have to report would be that we had a groundbreaking for our new community center library, very, very well-attended, in addition to having a ribbon cutting for our inclusive playground in South Morehead, which was also very well-attended, so looking forward to the next ribbon cutting, which is going to be the Rotary Natural Playground, but we have some really phenomenal projects that are coming to fruition and amenities for people to enjoy in our community, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so turning it over to you, city manager Molly.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we mentioned this a little bit, but just so folks are clear, this celebration for the grand opening and ribbon cutting of that natural play hill and bike park with the FM Rotary is on June 20th at 10:00 a.m. at Riverfront Park. We do have a rain, in case it's raining or the weather's not great, the backup is June 27th, so just a week later at 10:00, so. But looking forward to opening that gate and getting everybody out there on June 20th. Wanted to mention that in addition to our pathways to policing grants and scholarships that are out there to attract people to work in the Morehead Police Department, we're pleased to report that Morehead is also the recipient of a new grant that funds law enforcement agencies for an initiative called Intensive and Comprehensive Peace Officer Education and Training Program, and basically what this does is, these are funds that have been provided, that city council has accepted, as we're trying to attract folks into this field, and the funding will assist the City of Morehead in welcoming individuals that have two- to four-year degrees in areas other than public safety to work in areas of, like, not necessarily work in areas, but find a career in law enforcement, and so we encourage folks that are doing, we have Sergeant Brandon and others that are out at career fairs and others, there's been articles in the newspaper, there was a news release by Governor Walz and others, to try to help get this thing going. Individuals that are interested can apply online, it's right on our landing page at CityofMorehead.com, or contact Morehead Police Sergeant Joe Brandon directly at (218) 299-5233.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. We do not have an executive session tonight, and we do not have any new business, so it is 6:27, so we are going to adjourn. Good night, Morehead.